The time has come and passed for Monday, March 5th, 2018, regular council meeting. Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye, here.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. To lead us in prayer, I ask that Reverend Stefanian from St. Paul Armenian Apostolic Church, Deacon David, and Father Kishan from St. George Armenian Church, please join us at the podium to lead us in prayer in rememorializing the following prayer, prayer, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. All stand please.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Almighty God, bestow upon our leaders the spirit of wisdom and revelation, that they may know the hope of their calling, the riches of their inheritance, and the greatness of your power and abundant justice. Make them ready and willing to hear the truth, not as they would have it, but as it is. Close all the avenues of errors before them and open the sources of enlightenment. Let all their plans and purposes be in accordance to your will and their aim to meet their obligations and responsibilities for the years to come. Almighty Father, we just welcome your presence in this meeting. We thank you for each person that is here, representative of the people of this city. We pray your blessing upon them of wisdom, of insight. We pray also for the departments that take their policies from this board. We pray that they would be blessed with provision, with wisdom, insight, courage, and diligence. We pray that you would give understanding in the deliberations that are made tonight. We pray that you would bring accord, work things out in a way that is best for all the residents of this city, Waukegan, that we call home. In our Lord's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, thanks everyone for coming tonight. It'd be helpful if I had my glasses on there, wouldn't it? This past weekend, I was so happy to go to the Eureka Temple, number 1172, Daughters of the Elks Lodge, for the salute to seniors luncheon. And their theme was giving them their flowers. I had a blast within a few hours with these great seniors, and as promised, I would acknowledge some of the amazing folks I met. From the city of Waukegan, Ms. Queen Esther Young, age 90; Ms. Lillian Carpenter, age 90; Mr. Walter Bowles, and I'm, side note, the only fellow in the group, 92; Ms. Bertha Harper, 93; Ms. Flora Joseph, 94; Ms. May Benton, 96. It gets better. From the city of North Chicago, Ms. Georgiana Norwood, 100;
Wow.
Former firefighter's grandmother, Mr. Melvin Pettis; his grandmother, Ms. Alma Pettis, 104.
Woo!
I was amazed. You know, and I remind you, I think Ms., I think Ms. Young was still driving.
Oh, my goodness.
She couldn't bring them all down here? So, I had a blast, had a blast being at that celebration. I really want to give a huge shout out to Eureka Temple, 1172, Elks Lodge, the Daughters of Elks Lodge. I mean, they did a great job in, you know, bringing them together, and their families were there. I had a great celebration. The Waukegan Proud Award. With Lake County Restaurant Week starting March 2nd through March 10th, we are proud to acknowledge Papa Marcos located at 622 Grand Avenue, because Papa Marcos has been recognized as the highest rated restaurant in all of Illinois on Yelp. Congratulations Papa Marcos. I know they're here. Where they're at? Come on up. Come on up, yeah. Mike and Marlene?
Yes.
I'm gonna come around and get you and give you the... Wait a minute, did you wanna say, no, come right there to the mic, did you wanna say something? You gotta say something.
Thank you very much, Mayor. It's an honor to me, for me, to work in Waukegan. And the city of Waukegan gave me this opportunity after my deployment to Iraq. I was so desperate, not knowing what to do. And I just wanna say, there is always a hope, always a hope, all that we need to do, just to work and work and work hard. Thank you so much for every one of you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Happy birthday. We're gonna go to the middle. You right there? All right, this is the Waukegan Proud Award, so that means all the Aldermen come and take a picture. Everybody up front, take a picture with. White in the middle? Little man?
They're right there.
You get the holder. You gotta take up the slack afterwards.
I told you.
I wanted to get the picture.
All right. There you go. Thank you very much, Mayor. We appreciate it.
Mayor?
Yes?
If anyone has ever been to Papa Marcos, besides their great food, you will not get better service anywhere in Waukegan. These people are so kind, and you watch them serve lunch to dozens and dozens of people, and they know everyone's name, they know everyone's order. It's amazing, the level of service that they offer to our community. So, thanks and congratulations.
I gotta stop now. All right. Scoop 2018. In the audience today, we have original scoopers in attendance. Mr. Gary Cook, Dick Breen, Ron Senesnik, Bob Potasky are here to officially announce the day of this year's scoop. Come on up, gentlemen.
Senesnik.
All of you gotta come up. There you go.
Well, I like that shirt. Yeah. Oh.
Yeah, it's the weekend after 4th of July. I don't have the dates confirmed. I think it's 13th or 14th.
Face the camera, sir.
Again? Last time I broke one. So, this is our fifth year running the scoop, and each year it gets better. Us four are responsible for bringing all the classic cars down and getting car clubs involved in the scoop for Friday night, Saturday. So, what we do, we reach out to a lot of people. Last year, we had about a dozen car clubs from around the area, Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, Palanquin, car club from Elgin, a lot of people from Kenosha that Bobby knows. And we had another good event. So, for us, it's to make sure that the cars, the car people that come, have a good experience. So, what we did, we're the only car show that does this, by the way, in Illinois. What we did is, if you start out on the bridge, it starts out with the low riders, then goes into the 40s, the 50s, the 60s, the 70s, the 80s, the 90s, and then at the end, it's 2000 up. So, what we're trying to do for a lot of people is show them the evolution of how cars have changed from the 40s to the 2000s. And we added the 2000s because there's a lot of Camaros and Mustangs and Vets that are really nice, that we had to break down. So, here we are again, getting ready to start planning with Dave Motley. David kinda leads us and keeps us in line, 'cause us old Ford geezers, we get out of line real easy. And David, being young and everything, is, yeah, we do fall asleep in the meetings, but that's okay. But it's a lot of fun, and our focus every year is to have a better event than the previous year. Ronnie, you wanna say anything?
Ex-Waukegan and retired employee.
Again, what we're trying to do with this is it's all about the classic cars. And the more we can bring them down, and the more we can make them comfortable with being in downtown Waukegan with us and stuff, the more successful the event will be. The, Dave is taking care of the entertainment and stuff, and working with the city has been great. I mean, the support of you guys means a lot to us, and we have to have your support. And it keeps getting bigger and bigger every year, and I was gonna say, I heard an estimate of a weekend last year, like 30,000 people for a two-day event, somewhere in that area. So, it definitely is growing. As long as we can get good weather, we'll have the people down there.
Okay, and I'll try to keep this short. I love the short jokes, kid.
But anyways, I'm with the Mission's Car Club, and so is Dick and Jerry and Ron was. And what we try to do is, is put on an event that will be memorable, and that's what we've done. And we'd just like to thank the city of Waukegan for supporting the event and supporting classic cars in general, because as we become older, and the cars become older, more and more people are forgetting what they were really like. So, we'd like to keep that in their mind. It's always something to think about and to enjoy. So, thank you very much, city of Waukegan. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm actually the only one that still lives in Waukegan, so I just wanted to let everybody...
Well, we all live in Waukegan.
Yeah, they all lived in Waukegan one time. We all scooped back in the 60s, and I've been with the club for 10 years now. These two days started back in the 60s. But, you know what, I love Waukegan, I'll probably die in this town, and I go to scoop the loop. I think I've gone to the very first one they ever had, and I'll be down there every year, you know, God willing. I can't drive anymore, 'cause I can't see that well, but I get somebody to drive by.
No.
I got a 69 Pro Street pickup. I get somebody to drive it for me, so I can enjoy everything with them. But I hope to see all of you down there this year. We'll all have a good time.
Yes, we will. Thank you, thank you. Now, those dates again, the dates again are gonna be?
13th, 14th, 15th.
July 13th and 14th. All right, I gotta come take a picture, David? All right.
It's always the weekend after the 4th of July.
All right. Well, you heard it.
This is our official announcement photo.
All right. All right, then the all of you gotta join us. They wanna know.
Yes, this is how we're announcing, right?
All right, the all of you gotta join, 'cause this is the official announcement of scoop.
That's before you're...
All right, it's the official announcement.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. This is a, this is a good one for the city of Waukegan. A finance award. I'm so proud to ask our finance director, Tina Smigelski, to come up front. Tina, come on up. Yep, yes. I know the rest of your team, if they were here, they would come. The reason I'm asking Tina to come up is our finance department was awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for the fifth row, fifth year in a row. Our finance department does a great job, and congratulations to Tina and your entire team for this award.
She does like it.
Yeah, let her face get back to white for a second.
The Government Finance Officers Association is a national nonprofit in the U.S. and Canada that local government, state government, counties, all can join, and they have award criteria. So, we submitted our comprehensive financial report, our CAPR, and it has to meet several criteria, and if it does, then you receive this award that you achieved excellence in financial reporting. And we have a little plaque in the finance department that we put our medallions on. So, it's nice to receive the award, and thank you so much for the recognition.
Thank you, thank you very much. Seeing to your team, I'll say the job, thank you. Upcoming events, Art Walk. Waukegan's monthly downtown art celebration will take place on Saturday, March 17th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Genesee Theater will be hosting upcoming shows. Comedian John Molinari on March 15th, and country music act Sarah Evans on March 17th. Recent appointments. I wanna take a moment to acknowledge two people who were appointed last meeting, but were unable to attend. Demi Santiago, stand up, was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Board, and David Grossoff was appointed to the Historical Preservation Society. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in. We appreciate your volunteer, and know you do a great job. And David, I wanna, David is the facilities manager for Northwestern University, is that correct? Which has a, one of their locations in Waukegan, where they store all of their library books that are not currently being in rotation, is that right? Well, thank you, sir. It's great to have both of you aboard. Look forward to working with you. Take care. Item, item two. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest, to approve regular meeting minutes from February 20th, 2018. Any questions? All those in favor? Ayes have it. Matt, motion is passed. Carrie, audience time. Madam Clerk.
Okay. Three minutes. I got the kitchen timer here. Joyce Evans.
You can do it. You know that.
28/29, Council of Waukegan, Illinois. I've been dealing with the problem for three years now, and it don't seem like I can get any help from the city, Animal Control. The house behind me is empty, it's been empty for three years, nobody lives there but the dog, and this guy has been taken to court at least four times, and he's been fined, he's been court called and court supervised. The dog is still there. Just like this past Friday, Officer Salinas, he was there, about 10:00, 11:00 something, the dog was barking. My thing is here, every time Animal Control goes there, he gives him a rough time. The only way Animal Control can get a hold of this guy is they put a sign on his door. Okay, what happens is, the sign been on the door for two weeks, so he's trying to play like he's not there. So, my thing is here, if he hasn't been there in two weeks, yes, you can give a dog enough food in two weeks, but where do he crack for two weeks? So, that's animal cruelty right there. My thing is here, this dog, for three years, this dog has been barking. Animal Control, so they're hands tied, they just can't take the dog. So, since I can't get any assistance from Animal Control, I come here, somebody here ought to have been telephoned, tell them where do I go? Three years this has been going on, and the court has fined him, he's been had court supervision, and has been fined. So, I wanna know why this is an order being imposed.
Chief, yeah, chief, get that address for us. Joyce, let me look into that.
Three years. And like I said, officer come down here, they hear, it's, can't do nothing.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Joyce.
On Waukegan Food Market.
I just wanna, just clarify myself. We are, I'm just applying for the package goods, you know, not pouring the sense of video games and then slip with misunderstanding. They called me, they put a double E for me, for package goods. Just wanna clear myself, you know, that's what I'm looking for.
Ralph Peterson, Jr.
There we go.
Mayor, a couple of weeks ago, you talked to one of the Aldermen when she suggested that the public might view the council's inconsistency on the cell tower as corrupt. I believe the reason why the word bothered you so much is because that you have been corrupt ever since you became an Alderman, way back when you were charged with voter fraud to the current investigation of campaign fund irregularities. Now, your entire, your entire reason for getting into politics, in my opinion, was never to help this city nor the residents, but to fill your pockets with money and misuse power. I have handed out a few documents for the council and the public, which will back up what I'm saying. Mayor, I ask you, is this you in Las Vegas with one of your largest donors, January 18th? Speaking of corruption, isn't it true, this guy paid for your entire trip? Isn't it true that in addition to the thousands of dollars you probably got in cash, the records that I passed handed out show him giving you $15,000 a week apart from each other, and several weeks prior, to paying for your entire trip to Las Vegas? Isn't it true that this guy paid for the city staff's Christmas dinner at his business? Let's forget the cell tower scheme, kickbacks, all of these other things look and smell to me like corruption. In less than a year, you have raised property taxes, water taxes, cell taxes, and blown the city budget, hurting all of the poverty-stricken people while you are out golfing. Mayor, on city time, may I ask you, are you shaking out Mexican community? This is what I ask you. Now, I view everything out of your mouth as eye shadow, makeup talk, shithead cosmetics. Your thinking is shithead thinking. Pure shithead talk. I have no faith in nothing you say. You wear it, and it's all shithead talk to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Alonso Jenkins? No? That concludes audience time, sir.
All right. Item four, Judiciary Committee.
No.
A motion.
I'm sorry, correction. Item four is motion by Alderman Tempest, second by, correction, motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Tempest, to present resolution 18-R-27, recognizing Waukegan's Armenian community.
Thank you. Resolution 18-R-27, history of the Waukegan Armenian community, whereas the Armenians in the Waukegan area have increased in population considerably since the day in 1885, when a Mr. Dara Garabidian arrived to find temporary living arrangements in order to begin gainful employment at the American Steel and Wire Company located in Waukegan. And whereas many other Armenians came to Waukegan to further escape oppression and atrocities, as thousands of Armenians were driven from their ancestral homes to this country, and the earliest to arrive seeking freedom and opportunity include Hador Ohanian, John Onen, Avadis Kazarian, and whereas the Armenians now number many more in the Lake County area, and most reside in Waukegan, where they have contributed so much to the community. And whereas in Waukegan alone, Armenians are well represented in the professions of medicine, dentistry, law, education, as well as business and industry. And needless to say, a few of our better-known elected officials include Mayor's Robert Sarah Sabanjan, Hag Peravonian, Robert Sabanjan, Jr., and State's Attorney Jack Hugazian. And whereas churches in the community include St. Paul Armenian Apostolic Church, and St. George Armenian Apostolic Church, in addition to many church guilds and youth organizations, as well as Waukegan landmarks such as Hag Peravonian and Bedrosian Parks. And now, therefore, be resolved that Mayor Cunningham and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby celebrate the many achievements of the Armenian community to further celebrate the 100th anniversary of the Republic of Armenia in this their centennial year of 2018. And be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to the Waukegan Armenian community at the city council meeting on the 5th day of March, 2018.
She's the youngest here. She gonna be holding the resolution.
I guess we don't have to.
I'm told you're 97 years young. Maybe. She's gonna maybe. 97, everybody, 97.
Oh, council, gotta be in.
This is part of Waukegan's history. All right. Who's on the other speaking?
On behalf of my fellow Armenians, I thank the city of Waukegan to welcome the Armenians, especially after the genocide of the 20th century, the first genocide of the 20th century, when one and a half million Armenians were killed by Turks because they were Christians. century, when one and a half million Armenians were killed by Turks because they were Christians. And this safe haven, the land of the creed, the land of the brave welcomed us, took care of us, and in return, I know each Armenian had done their best for the prosperity of this country. And as it was mentioned, this year is the centennial year of the First Republic, which was established in nineteen eighteen. And most don't know about that portion of the history in the sense that when the first elections in nineteen eighteen we are talking, happened in Armenia, there wasn't discrimination of age. Anybody at age of voting, they voted. There was, in this country, I do believe it was in nineteen twenty when women were allowed to vote, yet in nineteen eighteen in Armenia, women voted and they had three seats in the parliament. In this country, it was, I do believe in nineteen sixties, when the minorities started moving in, where in nineteen eighteen, in the First Republic, the first election, there were two Kurds elected in the parliament as minority in the Armenian parliament. Our history is rich and the richness of our history we had brought to this country so that we can contribute as much as we can. The automatic transmission that we drive our cars with was invented by an Armenian. The color of our money, the grain, was invented by an Armenian. The MRI that saves lives was invited, invented by Armenian. So we are trying our best to give back to the country that gave us new hope, new life. And today, we are grateful to this great city of Waukegan that is honoring us as Armenians in this country. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for coming, but you know, I want to say this, I see in the audience a former schoolteacher and my Jefferson Junior High Jaguars teacher, Mr. Pepper Regan, please raise your hand, sir. Thank you.
Do you know it?
Yeah. But I especially want, I notice these young ladies who are with you. And the reason I say about our young people, sometimes we try to protect them and give them as much as we want, as we can, but sometimes they don't understand or don't know why we do that. You've eloquently given us some history that they probably did not know, they probably did, I'm not saying, but what would make them appreciate being an Armenian is understanding and knowing that rich history. So then they can then pass on to the next generation. So I commend you young ladies for being here tonight. There's a lot of history right here, and that young lady right there, ninety-seven, I suggest that you speak with her as many times as you can to get as much information as you can, so you will know the pride of being an Armenian. Congratulations, young lady. Thank you, sir, well done. This time we're about to go into a council meeting, if you guys like to exit, that's fine, we understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, it's been a pleasure. Thank you, been a pleasure.
Congratulations.
You bet, thank you. All right, item five, Judiciary Committee, Alderman May.
Thank you, Mayor. First item is a motion to adopt as presented in ordinance adding one Class B liquor license for Cribs Market, six twenty-six Franklin Street, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by, second by Alderman Tempest. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Motion's passed and carried.
Next item is a motion to adopt as presented in ordinance adding two class double E liquor licenses for CVS stores number twenty-nine oh one and number eight seven six one, located at three thousand one West Washington Street and ten South Lewis Avenue, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Nay.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay. I'm sorry. Forgot somebody.
I went too fast.
I'm sorry. I got the cheat sheet.
Okay, next item is a motion to adopt as presented in ordinance adding one Class E liquor license for Papa Marcos Restaurant located at six twenty-two Grand Avenue, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Moseo, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Nay.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Motion's passed and carried.
Next item is a motion to adopt as presented in ordinance adding one Class E liquor license for Maude Superfast Pizza, Inc., nine seventy Waukegan Road, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Tempest, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Nay.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Motion's passed and carried.
Next item is a motion to adopt as presented in ordinance adding one Class double E liquor license for Waukegan Fruit Market, nine fifty-one South Lewis Avenue, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Valco, roll call, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
I'm just going to explain quickly our vote, during the committee, there was some question and the owner was not available at that time. Now that he's come here, sit down, now that he's come here and explained it during audience time, we're fine with that, thank you. Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Nay.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Motion's passed and carried.
Next item is a motion to adopt as presented in ordinance adding one Class double E liquor license for Victory Mobile Gas Station, seventeen fifty North Sheridan Road, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Tempest, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Nay.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Motion's passed and carried.
Next item is a motion to adopt as presented in ordinance adding one Class E liquor license for Sunset House, fourteen fifty-one Golf Road, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos, correction, motion, second by Alderman Tempest, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton. Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Motion's passed and carried.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Labor Relations.
Labor Relations, item A, motion to retain H.R. Green pursuant to their proposal to assist city staff in advertising, vetting, and recommending candidates for the position of full-time water superintendent, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item seven, Alderman Valco.
Thank you, sir. Item A from Special Finance Committee was held over. Item B, a motion authorizing the proper city officials to, excuse me, the committee recommended not to authorize the proper city officials to retain Baxter and Woodman pursuant to their proposal to provide a certified water operator on a schedule presented at the rate of a hundred and ten dollars per hour. Funding from that line item would have been from five 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 nine one five five two four four three eight, and I would so move.
Motion, okay, hold on a second.
Recommend to deny?
We don't need to vote on that.
Okay.
It's taken off.
Well, just to, yeah, just a courtesy, of course, there was five here and that would be the quorum anyhow, so.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Item B is off the, has been taken off the agenda, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Item C, sir, is the motion to approve, the committee voted to approve purchasing authority not to exceed twenty-seven thousand dollars worth service sanitation for portable restroom services at the beach and downtown events for the May first, twenty seventeen to April thirtieth, twenty eighteen fiscal year by granting a good faith waiver per section two dash four five eight subsection I subsection seven, funding the line item from one hundred one zero six two two four four two eight. And for those of you in the audience, again, this is something that we've been cleaning up, we have two city departments ordering these things and it's going to go over the twenty thousand dollar bid limit, so it's going to be, right now it's at twenty-seven, so we're combining them and we're making a good faith effort, a waiver, excuse me, and I so move, sir.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
That's all I have, sir.
Insurance Committee, Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Your Honor. A motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle fire department workman's compensation claim C six four five dash one six dash one oh one seven eight dash oh one for a total of sixteen thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents, and I so move.
A motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Moseo, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Public Safety, Alderman Tempest.
Moseo.
I'm sorry, Moseo, I corrected, Alderman Moseo.
Item A, motion authorizing proper city officials to draft an ordinance for a handicap parking space at twenty-four sixteen University Avenue, and I so move.
A motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Bolton, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item B, motion authorizing proper city officials to enter into agreement with the Illinois Secretary of State's office for the purpose of running batches of license plates to obtain the vehicle owner information related to parking tickets. This is just to expedite the process, it's going to be a lot quicker and cheaper than messing around, having one of our officers have to do it, so I so move.
A motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Bolton, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Item C, motion authorizing proper city officials to amend their handicap parking ordinance, section twenty-one dash one one eight, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Villalobos, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
And item D, motion authorizing proper city officials to approve purchasing authority not to exceed thirty-seven thousand dollars with Inter-Pacific, Inc., for regular maintenance, install, and repair of electronic monitoring camera systems within City Hall, Police Department, and Metro Station for the May first, two thousand seventeen to April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen fiscal year by granting a good faith waiver per section two dash four five eight I seven. Funding for this line item is two nine five six two nine five two six four nine four, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Seager, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
One more thing, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I know you might have missed it in mayor's time, but on Saturday night, we had the annual WORAS Cup, and Your Honor Chief Bridges back there had the game winning jump shot, from what I hear, they haven't been able to stop him talking, since it happened, I guess, is what I've heard on the street. And now that's two in a row for the Fire Department, two years in a row, but before that, it was four in a row for the police. I, I gotta be fair up here, Chief, I'm sorry, Chief, but I, I know, I just wanted to say kudos, it was a good crowd, I couldn't make it, but all that money goes to the special rec, to the booster club, and the I O T C get to keep all proceeds from the concessions, and just kudos for putting it on, and she shows you that our police and fire, that's another way of giving back their services, having an event like that, I know all the guys like it, and I know when they hit the game winning shot, and they, you gotta hear them talking and carrying on it, talking officer falatiko today, oh yeah, there's all kinds of talking, but, you know, Chief Bridges back there, game winning shot, game winning shot.
Three pointer.
And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Boy, that's, that's fuel to the fire, fuel to the fire. All right, no problem, no problem, but I, I'm gonna add to that, I was very, very excited to see the number of family members who attended that event. That was, for me, more important than anything, watching the various families, members from police and fire, sit together, enjoy each other, and I call, I'm gonna say fellowship with each other, while rooting for their prospective teens, but that was, it was, it was awesome to see their families, their kids, just let you know how, how, how much they respect what their husbands and wives do. So congratulations to both of you for making sure those family members came out and had a great day. Thank you. All right, reports of communications, no old business, new business. Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Tempest, to approve outdoor special events, the sponsor has applied under the director of non-city government used city-owned buildings and venues, any questions? Roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion's passed and carried. Item B, motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve vendor payments dated March 5th, 2018, in a total amount of $2,222,953.51. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item C, motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Seager, to approve regular payroll dated March 2nd, 2018, in a total amount of $1,523,671.2. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item D, motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve MAP Metro Payroll dated February 23rd, 2018, in a total amount of $231,790.43. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item 13, there are no ordinances, 14 closing items. Alderman's time. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Yes, I guess I should comment, because I drive around the city, I notice a lot of tree stumps that are sitting there that haven't been removed. It seems to me, Barbie, we used to do that in-house, I don't know if we farm that out now or what we do, but we're at dead time, we want to get out there and start removing some of these dead stumps. It sure doesn't add to the city to see the dead stumps that are sitting in the parkway.
Yeah, and I know we, last year, last summer, since, last summer, we concentrated on one area, started jumping around, so now, we're going to, we're going to be concentrating, and I'll find out which area that's going to start in, to get them, and in some areas, there are more stumps than others.
But you're so correct, it doesn't make sense to start in the south side, and then right up to the ninth ward, and then some bad, get an area and clean it up.
Yeah, so that's, that's going to be the philosophy, just stay in one place, get it done, and what we will do this is make sure the Alderman know kind of what kind of schedule we're on, so you, at least you can inform all of the, of your residents.
Good idea. Thank you.
No problem, and thanks for bringing that up, sir.
Alderman May.
I'll pass tonight, thanks.
Alderman Valco.
No comment.
Alderman Taylor.
Pass.
Alderman Bolton.
Pass.
Alderman Seager.
Yeah, I'd like to take this time to remind everybody, let's, let's all work together as far as, we're under a winter weather watch right now, and it's started. So get those cars, please, off the street, and allow our public works, employees, give them a break. My God, don't leave that car there all night, so we can get these streets cleaned up. Without them, you wouldn't be going to work, would you? So, once again, I say move them cars off the streets, help, help public works, they're doing a terrific job, they've been a great help in the second ward, and I can't thank them enough. That's, that's about it. Thank you.
Alderman Moseo.
Pass.
Alderman Villalobos.
Yes, a couple things. I'd like to thank some of the Waukegan High School students who helped me out with the trash pickup this past weekend. We were able to tackle downtown Waukegan, we picked up about approximately eight to nine bags of trash. As the weather's starting to warm, I'll be moving more towards doing some of that community pickup around the fourth ward. So, a couple friends, a couple family, and some Waukegan High School students assisted me with that. Those students are really great, they are actually applying for National Honor Society, so getting those high-achieving students to get more engaged in our community is one of my goals, so that's one way we can do that, and helping to do that. Also, I was able to attend an immigrant rights rally on Sunday, and I just want to thank the people that attended that rally for being brave and showing support. Thirteen years ago, 2005, I came home from Waukegan, and there was an immigrant issue here in Waukegan, and I thought naively that it had nothing to do with my life. As I've evolved as a person, and been more conscientious about the community, I realized that I have friends, I know people that have to deal with immigrant rights, and the path towards citizenship. So I support anyone that I support as much as I can, whatever capacity I can, to help immigrants. I have written two letters of character reference for people appealing to stay in the country. One lady sits on a board with me, the other one is a highly engaged community member who volunteers regularly with various organizations. So, again, I want to let people know that I'm happy to support and help as much as I can with that issue. Two things coming up here next weekend, Waukegan Main Street is doing its annual Mardi Gras event at Glen Flora this Saturday at 6:00 PM. Also, the Waukegan Public Library will be doing a screening with the One Earth Film Festival of Dolores, and that starts at, sorry, I had it up here. That starts at 2:00 PM. So, I fear you're staying and doing a couple things from Waukegan, those are two things going on this upcoming Saturday, and that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Alderman Newsom.
Mayor?
Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman May to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed. Thank you.